Good evening. This is the Ogden City Council meeting for March 26, 2013. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present. First on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight we'll have John Ott, Barbara Beck, and Sarah Garcia from the American Legion lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
Amy Sue, will you turn that off, please?
Okay.
Please all rise and help me to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
Now if you please join with us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Before we get started, just a note, item number 11 has been removed from the agenda. So if you can just make note of that. Moving on. Next on the agenda is a recognition. And Councilmember Wicks.
Thank you, Chair Blair. And I would like to thank Mayor Caldwell for helping facilitate this. So this is a resolution honoring Jeff Lowe tonight. And I'll just say a few words about him before I go in. He's brave, kind, funny, innovative, and inspiring. An eternal optimist who really embodies a true adventurous spirit born in Ogden. And that's a source of civic pride here, I think. Jeff and his family have been involved in so many good things going on in Ogden over the years. And it's truly an honor for me to be able to honor him here tonight. So we'll go ahead. And this is a resolution, a joint resolution of the Ogden City Council and Mayor, Resolution 2013-5. And it is honoring American alpinist Jeffrey G. Lowe for his significant contributions to Ogden and throughout the world. And it reads as follows. Whereas, Jeffrey G. Lowe was born in Ogden, Utah, on September 13, 1950, to Ralph and Elgin Seiferson Lowe, the fourth of eight children in a very adventurous family. Jeff started skiing at age four and climbing with his father and brothers when he was six years old on the limestone and quartzite cliffs on the east bench of Ogden. In 1957, at the age of seven, he became the youngest person to climb the Grand Teton when he ascended the Exum Ridge with his father and brother Greg. And whereas, when Jeff was 14 years old, Yvonne Chouinard visited Ogden for a seminar with the Steinfelds Climbing Club. Jeff was allowed to tag along with Yvonne on a bouldering and unroped climbing session. The opportunity reinforced the importance of self-responsibility and was a pivotal moment in his life. Soon after, Jeff packed a small rucksack and ventured to solo climb a new route on Mount Ogden. And whereas, Jeff climbed often with his older brothers Greg and Mike Lowe and cousin George Lowe. Jeff had a promising future in ski racing, spending several years after high school ski racing for Tahoe Paradise College in California. The U.S. Ski Team coaches were insisting Jeff cut his hair and leave his girlfriend behind on the racing circuit. Jeff walked away from his Olympic skiing dreams and chose climbing full-time. He went on to make major first descents in the greatest mountain ranges in the world and is respected as the most talented technical climber of his generation. And whereas, Jeff's passion for technical, aesthetically beautiful, and interesting rock, ice, and alpine climbs took him all over the world for nearly 40 years. Jeff was continually amazed by how completely his childhood backyard playground had prepared him. The 27th Street roof above Ogden provided him with skills that later unlocked the key passage on Pakistan's Trango Tower. Frozen Malins Waterfall prepared him for 5,000 feet of near-vertical ice on his first descent of Kwangdi in Nepal. And whereas, Jeff has been instrumental in connecting the climbing world with sports and outdoor enthusiasts and the general public. He is one of only two climbers ever to appear on the cover of Sports Illustrated, where he was featured ice-climbing on the cover of the December 11, 1978 issue. In 1988, Jeff brought the first sport climbing championships to America at Snowbird, Utah, and CBS broadcast the event to millions. Jeff organized the first URA Ice Festival in 1996 and is also credited with introducing ice-climbing in the Winter X Games and bringing a high-adventure mountain film festival and climb fest to Ogden City, among many other things. And whereas, in 2002, Jeff returned to Ogden to be with his mother in the last years of her life. Around the same time, he started showing symptoms of a relentlessly progressive neurological deterioration. In spite of the physical challenges from his disease, Jeff has worked tirelessly on many projects that benefit Ogden and the outdoor community, including documenting the history of climbing through the tens of thousands of slides in his personal collection, book projects, and the completion of the film Jeff Lowe's Metanoia. And whereas, countless outdoor enthusiasts around the world have looked at one of Jeff's books or films for instruction or motivation, made use of climbing gear he designed, inspired, or developed, and continue this legacy through their feats, encouraged to think big, live in the moment, and never forget their dreams. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael P. Caldwell proudly recognize Jeffrey G. Lowe for his contributions in our community and his place in the rich history of Ogden outdoor recreation, as a pioneer in the climbing world and our most famous son. We express appreciation for his efforts to bring recognition to Ogden City for our outdoor recreation opportunities and all he has done to inspire adventure and enrich the lives of those who live here. So with that, I would make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks to adopt Joint Resolution 2013-5 and a second from Councilmember Gockner. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes.
And I believe the mayor has an additional presentation?
I do, and I'll come down and give it to Jeff in just a moment. But I too would like to add my gratitude for everything Jeff has done. There are very few transcendent athletes in any sports, and Jeff, I think, certainly qualifies as a transcendent athlete. Because of everything you did, it's inspired people to go bigger and do more and see more as a possibility. And you've been a great partner and a great friend to this city for a long time, Jeff, and it's a real honor to me. I have one of the keys to the city. We don't give many of these out, but I think you've certainly deserved that. You've brought a worldwide perspective here, and we appreciate everything you've done. And you're a great friend on top of all that. So thank you for everything.
We'll give you this plaque first, and then we can say someone. So let's see.
Let's see.
Let's maybe back up over.
This'll be...
(inaudible).
My name is Connie Self. I'm Jeff's partner, and I'm going to speak for him. He is difficulty speaking, but one-on-one, he certainly enjoys saying hello, so don't hesitate to stop by. So these are his words. So I will read these first, and then I have a couple words. First of all, thank you. When my life partner Connie Self first told me I was about to receive this award, I thought she said I was to be given the keys to Ogden Banks.[591.41][591.41](laughter) Wow, I thought. Now maybe I'll get to see our movie and the Jeff Lowe Mountain Sports Academy become a reality before I die. But Connie quickly set me straight and burst my bubble. It's the keys to the city, silly, she said. Oh, well, I thought. That is a huge award, too. This is a big honor for me, and I give many thanks to the Ogden City Council, especially Amy Wicks for her leadership in making this totally unexpected honor a reality. I am humbled by this recognition. And Mayor Caldwell, I am proud that the good people of Ogden elected you. Your personal involvement in sports, particularly outdoor gravity sports like skiing, climbing, kayaking, mountain biking, et cetera, has given you firsthand knowledge of the incredible value to individuals as well as the community in general, puts you in a great position to spearhead the ongoing push to get the word out to the wider world about just what a great place Ogden is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your support of this award, and thank you for continuing to push to make Ogden a destination for outdoor lovers of all stripes. Growing up in Ogden on the east bench with the Wasatch Mountains as our backyard, with parents who encouraged us in all our adventures, gave my seven siblings and I a launching pad for seeing the world. If I have given anything back to Ogden, that fact makes me very happy. I will continue to give back as long as I'm able. Thank you all very much, and a very special thank you to my family, my sisters, my brothers, nieces, nephews, and the greater family of friends and family of Ogden who have made this possible, without whom I could not have done most of what I have done. Thank you very much. And that was from Jeff. And I just want to say how very grateful we are for this honor. It really means a great deal to Jeff, but also to me and to his many friends. We've had many, many people post on Facebook saying how happy they are to see him honored this way, and we really are grateful. We want to invite all of you and the council members as well to a reception over at the front climbing gym on 20th Street following this. We'll be there till about 8:30, just celebrating and appreciating what a great city Ogden is and what a great area it is. In fact, Jeff was just out skiing at Snow Basin yesterday, where he learned to ski when he was four, and still back at it at 62 in a sit ski. So it's just an amazing area, and we're grateful, and thank you very much.
While Jeff's getting settled, I have to say that Jeff is amazing himself, but he comes from a pretty amazing family. And I think you guys should all stand up so we can see how much support he has here.
Okay. Yeah.
It's the best part of the meeting.
Yeah, here we go. Next up is approval of minutes. First are the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22, 2012.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. If anyone is needing to leave, they certainly could. We're not going to require you to stay through all the minutes.
Yeah, go to your party.
The party to get to.
The party.
Did I go to?
Yeah.
First.
Go to a party.
That's right.
How are you, man? Are you going to go over there?
They got his caregiver.
Yeah. How'd you like?
I knew who was...
He's straight.
Yeah. Okay. First are the minutes of the regular meeting of May 22, 2012. Councilmember Stevens.
Yes, Mr. Chair, they're correct.
And next are the minutes of the work session of August 14, 2012, the study session and regular meeting of August 21, 2012, and the study session of August 28, 2012. Councilmember Van Hoosier.
I've reviewed these minutes and found them to be correct.
Okay. Next, the minutes of the study session and regular meetings of September 18, 2012, the study session and regular meeting of September 25, 2012, and the study session of January 8, 2013. Councilmember Hire.
Yes, Chair Blair, I've reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
Okay. And the minutes of the regular meeting of November 27, 2012, and the special meeting of January 8, 2013. Councilmember Wicks.
Thank you, Chair Blair. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
And last, minutes of the regular meeting of December 18, 2012. Councilmember Gockner.
I have found them to be accurate and would make a motion to approve all the minutes.
I second it.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the minutes from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Stevens. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Next on the agenda are the public hearings. First to present is Mr. Ward Ogden.
Each year, the city receives federal funds through the Community Development Block Grant and through the Home Program. They're federal housing and community development programs, and we establish action plans for the use of those dollars. And in the middle of the year, we go through a process of amending that action plan. And the purpose of that amendment is to reconcile the actual numbers with what we had estimated when we made the plan. So the 13-year that we're in, which started in July 1 of 2012, needs to be adjusted. And so the item before you is to adjust the budget for the action plan. There are no suggested program changes or guideline changes, per se. There's a total amount of dollars that are in... The budget will increase by $874,349. I'll briefly discuss where that money came from. There's a small change, a $3 change in the entitlement amount. That's just due to a communication issue between HUD and us. There's a $3 amendment there. Program income, which comes from the repayment of loans that the city's made to borrowers, was estimated, and there is a change to that. When we get new numbers, we're changing the actual dollars compared to what was an estimate at the beginning of the year. So the new number estimates on the program income are that the Community Development Block Grant is increased by $451,000. Most of that came from the sale of some loans to the Ogden Reinvestment Corporation, which the council had approved. So those loans being sold generated the bulk of that, $400,000. In addition to that, there was a loan that was repaid. It was refinanced and repaid, so there was a chunk of money that came in for that as well. The other relatively large item, the $44,000 in the Home Program, is, again, another loan that was repaid that wasn't anticipated to be repaid. And then there were some minor adjustments to reconcile the estimate against the actual with a total of program income increases of $479,968. The final source of funds is carryover funds, which were budgeted last year, and some of those funds were not spent in the budget line items that they were placed. So this basically is an adjustment or the revising of the estimates to the actual dollars. And I'll briefly discuss the significant items. The Community Development Block Grant carryover is $224,706. And that's basically program income that was received last year that wasn't in the budget. It was program income that we received last year, but we received it late last year. And so it became carryover money as opposed to program income this year. And then there was some home money that was not spent that we'd anticipated being spent. So that became carryover money as well. In the city fund, there's $93,767 that we thought would be spent last year that did not get spent. And that's a couple of projects that were slow in spending. And so that money carried over. The total carryover funds increase is $394,378. So the total, again, is $874,349. As a general rule, when we do the amendments in the middle of the year, the general rule is to keep the money in its line item so that it doesn't change between line items. So these dollars basically stayed in the program line items, with one exception, and that is that the Section 108 loan, which was obtained several years ago for the Eccles Building renovation project, has a final payment of $91,000. And so the recommendation is to move some money into that category and increase that amount by $91,000 to make that final payment. It could be made next year, but the recommendation is to pay it this year. It's part of a timeliness test that we're trying to meet. And that money is coming from the Loan Loss Guarantee Fund, which is a program. So that item goes down and the 108 loan item increases. So those are the two items that change. The rest, the items stay consistent with their line item. That's the summary of the action plan amendment. And in a few minutes, we'll talk about just a program name change that's part of this item as well. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Or, sorry. Are we going to have Ms. Johnson now? No? Okay. Yes, it is a public hearing, so we will now accept...
To proposed ordinance, resolution?
We'll now accept, ready? Yeah, we'll now accept public...
Mr. Chair, can we pause for just a moment? It was our understanding that all the presentations would be made at one time, then you would be able to consider, open the public hearing for each one, and then consider the actions. So isn't that correct from staff? So if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Ogden, finishing all of the items under Item A, Annual Action Plan Amendments. Or are you finished with that?
Come to the mic.
All of the items, if you will, please.
Yes, and there's just one quick item that maybe I can cover before Laurie comes and does the budget opening discussion. Last year, there was a program guideline change in the CBD infill program. As you recall, that guideline was broadened to include other types of investments that the block grant could be made into in the downtown area. And as such, the program was renamed, but it was left off of the resolution. And so this item is simply to put it back on the resolution so that the name formally changes to the CBD Revitalization Program instead of the CBD Infill Program.
Just very quickly, the purpose of the budget opening is to adjust both the revenues and appropriations by $874,352 to concur with the amended annual action plan as previously presented by Mr. Ogden. And as a note, the budget document shows the exact dollar amounts to be included in the budget amendment, and the annual action plan budget is based on rounded numbers and does not show to the exact dollar what is being changed. So basically, it's those changes that Mr. Ogden explained previously, and we've incorporated that into the budget so everything concurs and lines up. Are there any questions specific to the budget opening? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now we will open the public hearing on the Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One.
Seeing as there's no...
Does anybody would like to come forward and say their name and address?
If anyone has any comments or anything they want to say regarding the Annual Action Plan Amendment Number One, please state your name and address for the record.
And seeing no movement, I will go ahead and make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Are there any other questions for administration?
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
If there is no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-5.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-5 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Next is to open the public hearing on the budget amendment relating to the Annual Action Amendment Number One. 13-10.
If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a proposal that we adopt ordinance 2013-10.
I'll second it. Okay. No?
All right, Mr. Chair. So you have a motion and a second. We're still on Proposed Resolution 20-13-5. In order to adopt that, so you've closed the public hearing and you need to adopt that, then you'll open the public hearing on the next one.
We did that.
Okay, sorry. What?
Okay.
So pardon me.
We adopted that one. And then we do have a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 2013-10 from Councilmember Gockner. Do we need to close the public hearing? Yes.
We need to close the public hearing.
Close it on that one.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Are there any other questions for administration?
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
If there is no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-5.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-5 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Are there any other questions for administration?
Discussion.
Any further discussion?
If there is no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-5.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-5 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Next is to open the public hearing on the budget amendment relating to the Annual Action Amendment Number One. 13-10.
If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a proposal that we adopt ordinance 2013-10.
I'll second it. Okay. No?
All right, Mr. Chair. So you have a motion and a second. We're still on Proposed Resolution 20-13-5. In order to adopt that, so you've closed the public hearing and you need to adopt that, then you'll open the public hearing on the next one.
We did that.
Okay, sorry. What?
Okay.
So pardon me.
We adopted that one. And then we do have a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 2013-10 from Councilmember Gockner. Do we need to close the public hearing?
We need to close the public hearing.
Close it on that one.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's closed.
So I'll go ahead and...
If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a proposal that we adopt ordinance 2013-10.
I'll second it.
Okay. No?
All right, Mr. Chair, so you have a motion and a second. We're still on Proposed Resolution 20-13-5. In order to adopt that, so you've closed the public hearing and you need to adopt that, then you'll open the public hearing on the next one.
We did that.
Okay, sorry. What?
Okay.
So pardon me.
We adopted that one. And then we do have a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 2013-10 from Councilmember Gockner. Do we need to close the public hearing?
You need to close the public hearing.
Propose it on that one.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that's closed.
So I'll go ahead and make my previous motion again.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 2013-10 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Councilmember Wicks? Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes. Right here, right? Okay, now we're on Proposed Resolution 2013-7, and we will now accept public input on the CBD infill program name change.
Seeing no movement, I will move to close the public hearing.
Let's just, Chair, it's not a public hearing, it's public input on this one.
So, yep, we can just make a motion to adopt.
Okay, I propose that we adopt Resolution 2013-7 to change the name of the Central Business District in Pilprah.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 2013-7 from Councilmember Hire and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes. Next is the budget amendment for the mobile apps program and Empire Parking CIP project. We have three presentations. Mr. Cooper, looks like you're first.
Members of the council, good evening. Tonight, we have three of us, if we may, to help you understand the budget amendment and to provide some background information. Myself, Mr. Bride and Ms. Johnson will cover the items for the budget amendment for the mobile apps program and the Empire Parking CIP project. Relative to the mobile apps program, before you, there's Proposed Resolution 2013-9, which would be amending the fiscal year 2013 budget to reappropriate $164,640 to the mobile apps program as well as the Empire Capital Improvement Project, which Mr. Bride will speak to in a moment. If you recall back in April of 2012, approximately $430,000 and $70,000 were appropriated from two separate funds to go towards the mobile apps program. $285,000 of that $500,000 was set aside for capital budget expenditures, and $215,000 of that $500,000 was set aside for scholarship funds. As the scope of the project has developed over time and as we have further defined our role, thanks, our role with Weber State University as a partner in the project, it's become necessary to identify some additional funds to match the funds that they are putting into the project. The estimated funds that the university has contributed is approximately $1.6 million. And so it's become necessary for us to request an additional investment from the original $500,000 that was already appropriated. So tonight, the budget amendment would consider reappropriating $100,000 from the $500,000 to the capital budget. So we would take $100,000 from the 215 column and reappropriate it to the $285,000 column. So this is not a request for new money, but again, just a budget amendment to reappropriate the money that was set aside back in April of last year. Just briefly, the project, for your recollection, is an 18,000-square-foot app accelerator. 6,000 square feet would be used for a campus bookstore. Approximately 6,000 square feet would be used for training purposes, and approximately 6,000 square feet would be used for actual coding and app development. So that's the scope of the project. And Ms. Johnson will discuss a little further the financial aspect in terms of the budget. I'll turn the time over to Mr. Bride for information on the Empire Capital Project.
I have, to give you a bearing on the location of these two parcels known as the Empire property, we will take a look at a couple of maps. First of all, this is the plat map for Block 25, Plat A. This is the larger of the two parcels. Here is 24th Street and Grant and Kiesel Avenue. And then the smaller parcel is located in this location here, again, 24th Street, Kiesel and Grant Avenue. And then I've provided a copy of a plan that was prepared by our planning department, master planning this area. And both of those parcels are shown in the highlighted yellow. The purpose for purchasing these properties is to provide better public access to future parking and to the development of this area, to benefit the public with access to buildings and utility easements that will be needed for further development. In this area here, you can see city-owned property, and the access that would be provided by these parcels would actually be of great benefit to those parcels in giving them greater access to a potential future parking structure in this area. The benefits are not for any one property owner, but they are really a public purpose. And at this time, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you, Mr. Bride.
So, just one thing, is the purchase price is just the fair market value?
It is the fair market value for these two parcels.
When will they be operating? If the money is appropriated, when would they be starting their project over there?
We have talked with property owners, and we're moving towards this as a goal and as a master plan for this area. But at this point, we do not have all of the properties tied up, but we do have understanding with property owners that this is the direction that we're moving in and good reception from all property owners in that area.
So this is just the start of the phase?
Yes. These two parcels are key to access in this area. Thank you.
Before Mrs. Johnson gets up, Brandon just needs to clarify the funding.
Yes, let me apologize and make a correction for the record. The request this evening is for additional appropriation of $100,000. So this is new money. So I apologize for the mistake. And Ms. Johnson will explain. Thank you.
Your mistake or the finances?
Ooh, had me nervous there for just a half a minute. Wanted to go over very quickly the budget amendment for this. And the purpose of this action, as Brandon explained, is to authorize funding for two separate projects. The first is to appropriate an additional $100,000 to the apps program Buildings and Renovations account within the miscellaneous grants and donations budget. The second is to appropriate $64,640 for land acquisition for the Empire Conference Center Parking Capital Improvement Project. Both projects will be funded from the Business Depot Ogden, BDO, returned to retained earnings account. And I'd like to quickly review the status of that account so you can understand what this process will do. As of July 1, 2012, this account had an item within the budget of returned to retained earnings in the amount of $460,950. At that time, the council asked that $100,000 be restricted for demolition by neglect. So if you take that out, this transfer of $100,000 to miscellaneous grants and donations, as well as the $64,640 for the land acquisition for the Empire Conference Center, it leaves a balance in this line item of $196,310. So you can see where the status of that is as of what we're expecting at the end of this fiscal year, barring any other changes. And so that is the purpose of this action. We request that you adopt that ordinance. Are there any questions specific to this? Does that clear as mud now?
Thank you for the clarification.
Now we will accept public input on the CIP amendment. Any public input, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay.
Seeing no activity, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
It's just public input.
Never mind, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Oh, okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 2013-15 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Hire. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes. And now we will open the public hearing on budget amendment relating to mobile apps and Empire Parking. Speak on the budget amendment relating to the mobile apps and Empire Parking, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Seems there's no motion. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on the budget amendment relating to the mobile apps and Empire Parking.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to close the public hearing from Vice Chair Garner and a second from Councilmember Wicks. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Any other questions or discussion?
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt ordinance 2013-9.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance 2013-9 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Stevens. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye, that passes. Okay. So now we're going to have a presentation from Mrs. Johnson on the budget amendment for grants and miscellaneous changes?
Thank you. As explained in the work session earlier, on occasion, we'll come before you and kind of reconcile all of the grants. In a perfect world, every dollar would come in exactly as you propose and be spent exactly. But on grants, you kind of have to make some projections at the beginning of the budget year. And what the purpose of this action is, is to reconcile those budget accounts to where we are now on what's been received and what needs to be appropriated. And so what we do is we recognize any additional revenue received from grants, as well as carry forward any unutilized grant funding from the previous fiscal year. And applicable appropriations are also detailed. The overall fiscal impact is an increase to the city budget in the amount of $2,745,214. And just very quickly, as an overview of this, the airport revenue portion of the budget opening and the appropriation portion totals $1,925,809. And the breakdown is an increase in federal funding of $3,5,954. And this increases to properly reflect the actual federal funding revenue that will be received on the following grants: runway rehabilitation, the security enhancements grant, as well as the acquisition of a firefighting vehicle grant. It's also a decrease to state airport funding of $282,989 because of the way the funding came in. And the state participates in all of those grants, as well as the State Taxiway and Apron Preservation Grant. And we also decreased retained earnings to balance those out due to over-budgeting the city's portion on all of the previously listed grants. And the airport appropriations budget totals the $1,925,809, as we stated earlier. Also, part of the funding, $170,240 of it, is police grant funding. Most of these are ones that you're familiar with. To recognize the federal funding for the Weber County Group Electronic Filing of Criminal Citations Project in the amount of $65,000, an annual bicycle rodeo grant in the small amount of $7,000, the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, is that you're familiar with, which is used to fund training and technology enhancement for the police department, and also to recognize the State of Utah Commission on Criminal and Juvenile Justice Grant, which is used to help fund records management at the Real-Time Crime Center. It also includes the receipt of the 2012 Northern Utah Gang Conference Scholarship in the amount of $6,450. So that overviews the majority of the grants. There's also the Crossroad of the West Grant. This is not new funding, but rather a carry forward of previous year funds which were expended during fiscal year 2013. And at this time, the grant has been fully expended, and there are no new funds within that grant amount. Are there any other specific questions? That's kind of a quick overview, and I realize there's a lot of detail and a lot of information there. And I do know that Scott Erickson is here to also address the United Way Grant, which is completely new. Most of these you're familiar with.
I might also add that the crash truck has arrived. So if you're out at the airport, you may want to contact Royal to go see the new crash truck. It's beautiful, I hear. We're hoping we never have to use it.
Okay, Mr. Erickson.
We could recognize Mr. Erickson as a council member from Brigham City, too.
I'm much more comfortable being on that side of the table than this side. I like asking the questions rather than answering them. This is the brand-new Ogden United Promise Neighborhood logo. We received it this morning. It has Ogden City green, Ogden High School orange, and United Way blue. And it circled together. There have been a lot of individual groups that have tried to help in the community with education and with helping reduce crime, and all of them have done some good. But the Promise Neighborhood forces all of these groups to work together. It's a Department of Education grant that comes to a nonprofit entity rather than the school district. And part of what we will be doing over the next couple of weeks is a community assessment. We'll have Weber State students knocking on over 1,000 doors, asking questions to find out what the real needs are in this footprint that you have a copy of upon the dais. It's the black outlined area. The Promise Neighborhood Grant has two different components of it. One is a planning grant, the United Way and Ogden United was awarded just under a $500,000 planning grant to come up with a plan to help revitalize this area in terms of education and community development. Some of the demographics that made this project that the Department of Education was interested in: high absenteeism rate, high obesity rate, high tobacco and alcohol use, low immunization rate, high gang involvement, high teenage birth rate, low graduation rates. They're all problems, they need to be solved, and together, working with all of the players in the community rather than individually, we feel like we can solve them. This is a good visual of how this process works. It's a pipeline. Once kids get on the pipeline, we've got to make sure that there aren't any leaks. Where they leak out, they drop out of school, they can't become contributors to the community. And this can't just be done at the school level. Family, social service, and health-based programs need to be a part of it, and the community has to play a role. This can't be the school district versus the city versus the nonprofit community. This has to be all of us working together to make sure that everybody can contribute to our community.
How does a student get into the pipeline on this?
That's a good question. Every student in the school district will be part of this pipeline. One of the components that we expect to see in the community assessment, as have been found in other communities, is a pre-K program, a more robust preschool head start-type program to help get them started. Much of this is based off of the Harlem Children's Zone that started out with a few small city blocks in inner-city Harlem 12 years ago with the Kitty College. This is the 12th year that they've been into effect, and 93% of the students that started in that kid. in that Kitty College are going to college this year. And this is a program that's trying to be replicated around the country. And so part of this community assessment is determining where the needs are and what we can do to make sure that everybody gets on this pipeline so that we can see success.
So does the school nominate the student, or does the parents bring them in? Or you know?
It's a combination. Right now, there are about 200 on the waiting list for Head Start in the community. So part of it will be expanding the capacity that we already have, and part of it will be education to make sure that these families understand that those opportunities are available for them. The vision for Promise Neighborhood is that all children growing up in Promise Neighborhoods have access to great schools and strong systems of family and community support that will prepare them to attain an excellent education and successfully transition to college and career. And the purpose is to transform the community. We spent a couple of days last week in San Antonio. In the high school in their Promise Neighborhood area, the graduation rate in two years went from 47% to 84%. That's the type of thing that we hope to see happen in the Ogden community.
How are you planning to deal with the transient population? Because most of the children that started Odyssey never finish at Odyssey.
Sure.
So is there a plan in place to make sure those children stay in some kind of enrollment?
Yeah. Part of the Promise Neighborhood process is a data system that works with the school district, works with city recreation, works with our gang units, and works with all of the different data components to put them together so we can track kids when they go from Odyssey to Madison to Gramercy to one of the other schools and be able to... So they're not starting over. We understand what they need, what extracurricular activities or what challenges they have, and are able to help them more quickly as they move into a new school. So there are 10 promises for this Promise Neighborhood. The first five are mostly educational. They're ready to start kindergarten. They improve academic performance in core subjects. They transition from middle school to high school. They graduate from high school, and they're ready for a post-secondary degree or trade certification. The second are the family and community strengthening. And this is where the city component comes in. Students are healthy and can access enrichment activities. They feel safe at their school and community. They live in a stable community. They have family members and community support, and they have access to 21st century learning tools. This can't just be about education. For the city, this has to be about providing opportunities for students to be better prepared to have jobs, to contribute back to the community, and it, in turn, will reduce some of the crime and some of the other negative impacts that it has on the community. Ogden United, as many of you know, is a group that involves the city, the school district, United Way, and many other groups. And all of these groups are coming together to make sure that this is a success. The timeline is right now, we're working on building strategic accountable partnerships with all of the Ogden United groups and any other nonprofits in the community. The community assessment will start in the next couple of weeks, and it will take a number of weeks to complete. When that comes in, we'll have a number of gaps where we are just missing the boat. We're not filling the areas that we need to to make sure that we're providing opportunities for these students to succeed. When we find out what those gaps are, we will use evidence-based solutions to fill in with programs, whether it's expanding current programs, or if needs be, we will work with organizations to create new programs. The grant, implementation grant, will be submitted in September, and we should hear back one way or another in December as to whether Ogden United gets that grant or not. Those grants, there have been 11 awarded around the country. They range anywhere from $1.5 million a year for five years to $6 million a year over five years. Part of the determination for that will be the need, the strategy we put in place, and the capacity that we have to be able to strategically spend those dollars and make a difference in the community. The other aspect to this community that's... Or this project that's different from other federal grants is most federal grants, it requires a match, and you can't get any others based on it. This is a new place-based method that the White House is working on so that they try to layer these federal grants. So San Antonio, where we just were, has received a Promise Neighborhood, a Choice Neighborhood, a Burned Juvenile Justice Grant. They're receiving much more than the $4.7 or $4.8 million that they received from this Promise Neighborhood grant because they're able to layer these grants as the federal government targets areas that really need help and have shown an ability to implement these plans and make a difference for their communities.
So is this ongoing money, or is it granted each year, the grants that you're looking for?
The way it is presented is that it is a set amount of money for three years, and then you can apply to extend it for two additional years. That's all pending congressional approval and how Congress works out their budgets. But the way the Department of Education has it set up right now is that it's an initial three-year with a two-year extension.
And if you're not granted the grants, is there another plan that you're looking at?
Whether this implementation grant comes in with a large amount of money or not, the process of tearing down silos and working together between the city, the school district, the nonprofit community, and finding a collective impact to make a difference rather than individually looking to fulfill their mission is a good process to go through. We hope we get the funding. We think it'll make a huge difference to the community. But regardless, it's a good exercise to go through as we try to collaborate on these efforts.
So are you bringing in evidence-based programs for the local providers to use, or are you just going to continue doing what they've been doing and support them?
It's a combination. So what we've gone around doing is asking... We've asked nonprofits and... I talked to City Rec this week about what they're doing that they would like to expand if they had additional resources. And most of these groups are using evidence-based processes already, and so it's helping them to do that. If we see a gap in the community assessment, then we can identify some programs that we can suggest to them and say, "Look, here are two or three that are working in other communities. Is there one of these that you could implement that would help fill some of the gaps that we found in the community assessment?"
Is there any sort of evaluation tool to figure out if, you know, what we're doing with those is effective? Or are you just looking at overall graduation rates?
Yeah. Every two years, there has to be an assessment of both the... There will be additional community assessment that will be one tool, and Ogden United will assess the programs that are in place to make sure that they're doing what they say they'll do. It will be like an RFP process to get access to the funding.
So there's an evaluation each year?
Absolutely.
I don't see Ben Lomond on your map. Are they part of the program also?
So the way the map is set up, it's based on census tracts. And this was the area that was approved by the Department of Education. We expect that there are students that live in this area that go to Ben Lomond and students that live outside the area that go to schools that are inside the area. There will be some leakage in and out, and it will have impact on the whole community, not just this area. There's a chance that after going through the community assessment, this area will be reduced even more, but we don't know that for sure until this assessment comes back.
I see Horseman and Ben Lomond's just below Horseman in there, but it's...
And Gramercy and...
Within the geographical area that you're talking about.
Yeah, there are five schools that are feeding into this that go to Ben Lomond or feed into Ben Lomond.
And Gramercy and Mount Fort are just outside the boundary. You know, it's one of those... We will work with the Department of Ed to try to come up with the boundary that fits the needs assessment the best. Some of the areas that have been successful in other parts of the country, the one in Buffalo is one square mile. This is five and a half square miles. So we're looking at a much bigger geographical area that we may have to pare down somewhat. And this is just meant to be brief. I'm happy to come back at another time, and we can go into more detail in a work session or something else.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we will open the public hearing on the budget amendment relating grants and miscellaneous changes.
Hi, my name's Courtney White. My address is 702 Polk Avenue. I'm in Ward II. I just wanted to say on this that it sounds like five... Was it $500,000? Is that how much it was, over five years? Sounds like the return on investment on this would be pretty much a lot longer than five years. I know probably you wouldn't see anything for... I mean, a child's in school for, what, 13 years? And being from Ward II, I noticed that none of the schools in Ward II seem to be represented by this map. So after five years, when this money is gone, it sounds like a lot of money is going to be coming out of Ward II to support a lot of schools in near-city Ogden. And, you know, it just... It sounds like this isn't something where you probably would put a lot of money into the initial setup. It sounds like something that's going to cost a lot of money over time. Every year is probably going to be... If it's $100,000 a year, basically, you know, for five years, it's probably going to be $100,000 for 13 years to get a child all the way through high school graduation. So I don't... I'm just a little worried that a lot of money is going to come out of other areas such as Ward II and go into the inner-city Ogden. So, thank you.
You.
Seeing no other participation, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion to close the public hearing from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Garner. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want me to respond?
Please.
I think you'll find that wanted significantly more than 500,000. We're talking about anywhere from $1.4 million to $5 million a year for five years. I think the potential of learning in this geographic area, and one thing that Scott said was, this is bigger than most of the other geographic areas of the cities that have applied for this grant. But the chances of us learning things that work in certain elementaries will work, I think, in all of the elementaries. It's a great opportunity to get a lot of people together. Even San Antonio said, "We recognize that some of the money's going to go away here in another year, couple of years." We're hoping that we've learned the things we need to learn, and we've got things established so that we can continue doing the things that the grants helped us to be able to learn and to do. So I think it's going to have a marvelous effect upon the community. And there's a lot of feeder schools that will be benefiting, I think, directly from the funds. If we could, we'd include a lot bigger footprint. But I don't know that we could manage it, and I don't know that the school district could manage it. And so our hope is to start out with a little smaller footprint and go from there.
And so it's not money that's coming out of anybody's budget?
It's federal money.
It's federal money that we would not have if not for this program being implemented?
That's correct. It's new money. I also should mention, we have Robert Hunter, who's the CEO of United Way here, and Leslie Harold. It's nice to have them here. They joined Ward and I and Scott to San Antonio last week. We learned a great deal, which we can come back and share with you at a different time.
No, my perceptive is that if we can build a structure within this boundary area, it can seep over into the other schools that are not showing on the map. Would that be a...
Seep is a technical word, isn't it? Yes. I think best practices and things learned and programs that we purchase could benefit, you know, the entire city and the entire school district.
I apologize that I did not bring up this amount in my earlier presentation, but we need to clarify that the only action the council is with this budget amendment is the $67,340. So as far as actual dollars, that's all you're actually voting on tonight.
Any further discussion?
No further discussion. I'll make a motion that we adopt proposed... Or adopt the budget amendments for the grants and miscellaneous proposed ordinance 2013-11.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Garner to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-11 and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Okay. Next is the fiscal year 2014 to 2018 Capital Improvement Plan. A presentation from Ms. Ginny Neller-Smith.
Very glad to be here. Just want to briefly review what we've been doing for the last five months with regard to the capital improvement project... Or, excuse me, project... Plan. A capital improvement project is defined... There's three main project types. These are repair, maintenance existing facilities, additions or renovations to existing facilities, and new construction over $30,000. So these are all large projects that, under our ordinance, contribute to the capital plan. And that's sort of legalese for meaning, things we're going to have for a long time. We have a lot of equipment and things that we buy that cost more than $30,000, but because they have a shortened lifetime, we don't count those as in the capital improvement plan. Objectives that the council's been working on, and we do this every year, for establishing this capital improvement plan is to determine the long-term needs of the city, making sure that they align with the council's and the administration's goals. We review the master plans that we spend a lot of time on in terms of the water and sewer and storm sewer to make sure that the projects that we're considering funding are in line with those plans. And also, probably most importantly, is to provide direction for the 2014 budget. So when we complete this project, then the administration takes that into consideration as they prepare that 2014 budget. So as I mentioned, we've been working on this since October, when we first received the capital improvement plan, proposed capital improvement plan, from the administration. The Planning Commission... We get it at the same time as the Planning Commission does, and they review that. They did that... We received their recommendations in November. And then we've had four work sessions with regard to that. And there's been some changes that have come from the administration and some changes that council... The council has recommended, which we'll review in just a minute. The administrative made some initial amendments, which were also came through the Planning Commission process. The first was to remove the Fourth Street Ballpark infield. That was just there in error. It had been funded in this current-year plan. And they added in the sports field and greens equipment, which was a ramp project. They added in the 2100 Madison Liberty Park improvements. That's associated with the new D-school and the arrangements that we have with the school district. The initial one did not include planning money, so they amended that brief to include some additional planning money. We removed the Empire Conference Center parking and the seismic retrofit for remodel Fire Station Number Two because both of those have been funded in the current-year CIP plan, and so there was no need for those to be in next year's plan. The council changes involve requesting an amendment to the Trackline Business Park. The initial brief did not include the full amount of the project. It just included the city's match. So we requested that change. And based on our discussions with some of the department directors and division managers, we are just shifting funding for a couple of projects from farther out to FY14. We also ask sort of a last-minute change that they combine two projects to make a new project, which is the like ultraviolet light and pool covers for Lauren Farr Pool and the Born Farr Pavilion. And both of those were actually funded, partially funded with rent funding. One of the other things we always do, too, is the council goes through a ranking process so the administration understands where a council's priorities are with regard to the myriad number of projects that are in the plan. And this is the council's first priority was the... And this is the, the council's first priority was the, the boiler for Union Station. This is the third installment of a three-year plan, and this will, uh, provide enough money for them to do that final boiler replacement. And then, of course, council has always expressed concern for safety for its citizens, and so has always ranked high, the curb gutter and sidewalk replacement. And then number three was the Grant Promenade. And, um, as you recall, that's, uh, going to be a very nice, um, urban trail and, uh, that will, um, serve the, the city and bring the river project, um, downtown. Um, I, I just wanted to, I, to re- recognize the administration's efforts. Uh, the ramp-funded projects that we received totaled $760,000. That includes the, the per capita amount that the city gets. But I believe that they funded the all, or at least a portion of all of the projects, um, that the city submitted this year. Um, is that right, Mayor? So that, that's a great, um, kudos to the administration for, for, for making that happen and, and taking that burden off the general fund. So I just have one, uh, thing that we need to take care of business. Because of that last-minute change with regard to... I'm sorry, that's really small, but I just wanted to, to make sure you could see this. We're making a last-minute change to the Schedule A that's associated with the ordinance that would adopt the capital improvement plan. And essentially, it just adds, makes this, these last changes where it combines the two, uh, pool covers into one, and then the pavilions into the other. So this is the, the final Schedule A. So we would just request that, um, you substitute this new Schedule A for the old Schedule A, and then, um, take your action on that. Um, are there any other questions? For me?
Great job.
Thank you very much.
But with that, I will make a motion that we accept the substitute Schedule A as presented tonight.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Garner to accept the substitute Schedule A, and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
Chair Blair, I need to be, I need to ask to be excused at this time, so.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2014 to 2018 CIP with substitute Schedule A. Wish to speak on the public hea, on the FY 2014 to 2018 CIP.
Seems there's no motion or activity for the public. I make a motion that we close the public hearing for fiscal, uh, regarding the CIP plan for fiscal year 2014 to 2018.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing from Vice Chair Garner and a second from Councilmember Hare. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That, okay. Any other questions or further discussion?
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-8.
I'll second.
With-
Schedule A.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-8 with the substitute Schedule A from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Hare. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
Member Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Next on the agenda is reports from the planning commission. Mr. Roover.
Chair members of the council, um, the planning commission looked at the definition of social hall and how social halls should be handled in Ogden City. And they looked at, um, where they should be allowed, and they considered the C2 and C3 zones as a conditional use. As we look at a conditional use, there are already existing standards in the ordinance that the planning commission looks at when they look at a conditional use. They look at the impact that it can have on residents in that area. They look at the impact that it could have on traffic movement in that area. And so they take those standards, and then what they've also done is they've added additional standards that they recommend the council look at when they look at social halls. And one of those is that they look at the requirement of the size, that it at least be 4,000 square feet in size. And the reason for that is they want to make sure that it's happening on, um, a large enough piece of property. The next is that they look at the, um, time these events, um, should happen, and they want to make sure that the business is open at least five days, uh, per week, and that the, there's only two events for paid entry, uh, that would be linked to dancing or live music. And then the next portion that they looked at, um, for specific requirements is the hours of operation and how that would have an impact on, um, some of the local characteristics in that area, dealing with site location or just the overall characteristics of the neighborhood. Some other things they looked at is that no alcohol could be served and that, um, it doesn't, um, fall under the definition of an arcade or pool hall. And the last one is that the use of the private function, when they have private functions, that they are not ticketed events. So the only ticketed events are just those two, that they're allowed, um, per week. And those are the recommendations that the planning commission has forwarded on to the city council. But they wanted to make sure that, um, it was looked at as a conditional use in the C2 and C3 zones and was not, um, permitted use or a conditional use in the C1 zone, because that's more neighborhood commercial.
Could you, uh, elaborate on the enforcement side of this ordinance? How is the, uh, conditional use going to be enforced? How is it going to be, apply to those who are looking at business, not only in a certain area of our city, but throughout the city?
Well, the first thing, when they first come in to, um, apply for the conditional use, and it goes to the planning commission, they'll notify residents within 300 feet, and then they'll come in and give their input. Once it's approved, when we get into the enforcement part of it, that's when we start, um, looking at, making sure, um, that, you know, our police officers, when there's events and things like that, that they're aware of it. Uh, we'd be looking also at the social media. So, um, typically, these events are placed on Facebook or things like that, and so we can monitor when these events are happening so that, um, we can make sure that they're only having two events, um, during that period of time. And then also, um, we want to encourage, um, the neighbors, when they're aware of things and events like that, that they call into code enforcement and they let them know what's going on.
So if I have a business license and the conditional use is passed this evening, would I have to come back in and apply for that conditional use?
You would. You'd have to come back and go before the planning commission, and then the planning commission would look at the original conditions that are in the ordinance right now for a conditional use. And then they'd also look at these six conditions in addition to those. And then they would make a determination if they're, um, if the use can come into compliance with that. Um, and then they may add additional conditions based upon, um, the specific requirements that they look at, um, as a conditional use permit.
And a lot of times, that's based on the neighborhood setup, different elements that are around that business.
Exactly. Yeah. They're, they're going to look at the characteristics of the neighborhood, um, the proximity of the use to the residents, um, where the doors are facing, um, you know, where the stage is located inside, um, the social hall, and, um, the impacts mainly that it's going to have on the residents.
During that time that the planning commission is reviewing it, will the, those neighbors that will be mostly impacted, will they be involved in that? Will they be informed of what's going on?
What will happen is, they will be sent out notices, and then the planning staff will, um, have, basically get a report put together, and that will be, um, presented. That will be available at different, um, the library and different locations that they can look at. And then there's a number on a sign that we put out there. They call and have dialogue with staff during that process. And then at the public hearing, then they give their specific comments, and then the planning commission takes into those consideration, those, um, comments that they have. And oftentimes, um, if there's, if they're not feeling comfortable, they'll table it and say, you know, you need to address these specific issues and then come back to the commission on it. But if they feel comfortable with, um, everything, then they'll approve it at that time.
So under their current conditions, that would not exist. Is that correct?
Right now, it's, um, it would not. Um, the proposed language would be looking at it as a conditional use.
And so, right now, we have no definition for social hall or dance?
Correct. And so this is getting some clarification on, um, that specific language and, and not using Webster's dictionary for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we will receive public input, or input regarding the amendments to the lodge and social hall definitions.
Good evening. My name's Ernest Mccone. Live at 1050 28th Street. Um, over the, uh, discussions over this definition issue with the lodge and social hall, um, it's mainly pertaining to ticketed events and, uh, live bands. Um, we've discussed this before in the past, where, you know, an unamplified acoustic guitar would be considered a live performer. And we have concerns over enforcement and concerns over, uh, noise ordinances. Now, it's my understanding where we're talking about, um, 65 decibels, about 150 feet from the entrance or exit. Uh, my only kind of peeve with this is, uh, I don't have any issues with the, you know, the days of the week or the hours of operation that, uh, planning suggested, but I would like for you all to consider, um, I am currently allowed to play a jukebox or a sound system, put some CDs in and, and play at 65 decibels, 150 feet from the entrance, um, through recorded music. Uh, I would imagine that, uh, DJs also fall under that. I've been told DJs fall under that. And I would imagine that, uh, you know, done right, uh, live music can definitely, definitely be, uh, applicable to those rules. Um, so that's my only comment on that.
Sure.
My name is Robin Halverson, and I would just like to share with you a memory I have. Do you all rem, any of you remember Scott Sneddon? He was a long-serving council member and mayor of Ogden. And one day, he said to me, he pointed at the exact place that we're talking about, and he said, "I wish I could open up a club there for kids to go dance." Now, you know, he raised kids in Ogden, and we didn't have a place for him then, we don't have a place for it now. So I would, and I also am in, in the neighborhood, but I used to live right behind there, and, uh, when it was Smith's. And didn't even know anything was going on, you know? I'm sure music's going to be a little different, but, um, I would like to encourage you to consider this for the people in Ogden, for the young people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi again. I'm Courtney White, 702 Polk Avenue, Ward Two. I just wanted to say that I, you know, listening to the, the points that was brought up today, that if, if they were bulleted, I think that probably 90% of them could be just completely chopped out because they're already covered by other laws. I mean, ordinance law, uh, ordinance for sounds, uh, those are the things. I would say that if you're going to define a social club, you should basically just say, a social club is a place where people go to socialize. I mean, and that's good, that could serve as, as, you know, basically all you need, because everything else you need to do seems like it's already covered by something else. And, and again, I mean, some of the points, I mean, the fact that they can only have, uh, events where people pay twice a week, I mean, how far are we going to go? Are we going to say that they can only dance with, they're at least two feet away from each other? I mean, it just seems like this is getting pretty, pretty, you know, arbitrary. And I don't know if this is some sort of witch hunt. It just seems, seems like it's, it's a, it's a solution in search of a problem. So, all right, thank you.
Hi again. Patrick Powers, um, from Salt Lake City. Three-minute drill. Awesome. Um, kind of just to add on to what Courtney White, my good friend, said, um, it, it just seems like the ordinance itself goes a little far as far as trying to control the actions of these businesses and these people. Obviously, there's demand for these types of businesses here in Ogden, otherwise you wouldn't be discussing it. Obviously, there are people frequently, frequenting these businesses, um, that are trying to be a part of what's going on, um, and, uh, patrolling social media to try to spot parties so you can, you know, report it to, you know, code enforcement. I mean, it just seems a little far, doesn't it? To, I mean, to really seek to control people that much, um, that you would dedicate so much time and so much effort, and then in time, probably money, to doing something like this. I mean, I've got to imagine that Ogden's got bigger problems to address than a few businesses out there doing some live music events a few times a week. Again, as Courtney White said, there's got to be a better way to handle the issue that you're trying to prevent, which is noise levels, right? Noise levels, congestion. If you wanted to deal with that, why not deal with it on a case-by-case basis? Why not deal with it through the courts? Why not wait until someone actually complains about one of these businesses to try and address this problem? Um, it's my understanding, um, a couple of weeks back, we heard from a gentleman who would be negatively affected by this ordinance or by these definitions that are going to be added to code, or whatever it is. His business will essentially be zoned out of existence. Um, so the council is prepared to put an Ogden business out of business when that business has done nothing wrong, to my knowledge and apparently to your knowledge. If it were a problem with noise, um, soundproofing, you know? To, to keep noise and congestion and other issues, um, to a minimum, there are other ways to address that, um, without these sweeping new ordinances or definitions that are going to have such a negative impact, um, on the economy of Ogden, um, as well as the people of Ogden, who again, are obviously demanding these types of services, these types of events. And so i- it's not just, you know, the few people who are owning businesses that are going to be negatively affected, but the potentially hundreds of people that are looking to these businesses to provide those services for them. And so I, I'd love to get kind of your thoughts on that, whether or not there is a more effective way to deal with this specific issue, this specific problem.
Thank you.
If there's no other input, any questions for Mr. Ro?
Close the public hearing.
I second. There's, it's not a public, it's just input.
No, it's just receive input, so. Any further discussion?
I think the conditional use is probably a, a better way of, of using this type of a situation, and I, and I think we need to look at the opportunity for the youth to participate in, in activities and that, uh, as I looked at the ordinance, uh, if we pass this tonight, it goes through, throughout the whole city. And I may have some reservations in opening up the city completely in that direction. And I was very interested, I want a safe place for our youth to, to go and participate. And so I was very interested in how the aspects of code enforcement would be administered, uh, the steps that someone would have to go through to obtain a conditional use. And I, uh, I think those guidelines are, are very effective, but I, I have to analyze whether I want to do it for the whole city in that aspect.
I'll just add, um, the conditional use does add this flexibility to have a case-by-case situation for the planning commission to look at that. And the planning commission, I need to commend them. They've really worked hard, and the business owners who are working on this have had opportunity to come and to discuss this with the planning commission, and will continue to have those opportunities. And so with this conditional use, if they can look at that at a case-by-case in the neighborhood where it presents and say, this- in the neighborhood where it presents and say, "This will fit for this particular neighborhood," and the businessmen and the citizens have the opportunity to work together to make that successful in their neighborhood. So, any other comments? With that, I will make a motion to adopt this proposed ordinance 2013-13.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adopt proposed ordinance 2013-13 from Councilmember, from Vice Chair Garner and a second from Councilmember Hire. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes. Next is administration reports. First up is...
Mr. Ward Ogden will gladly come up and present.
Mr. Chair, members of the council. This next item is one that we've been, as an administration, working on for many years to bring about the revitalization of a vacant inner block area and have been saving money for several years. The proposal is that the council authorize the use of $800,174 in our Community Development Block Grant Infill Line item to help facilitate the development of a 23-home, single-family lot subdivision. And the reason that it's before you today is because our infill housing guideline that the council adopted establishes a ceiling of 10 home subdivisions that the administration would just do without further approval from the council. But this being a 23-home subdivision comes to the council. This is an interesting slide. It shows the red box is the block that we're referring to, and it is between 23rd and 24th Street, between Quincy Avenue and Jackson Avenue. And it shows the relationship between this new project and many other efforts that the city has undertaken over the years and some projects that we're currently working on. The yellow boxes are the historic districts, the Eccles and the Jefferson Historic District, which we've been working on for the past 10 or 12 years and have done a significant amount of improvement there and a lot of investment. The peach-colored box is kind of an expansion of the Eccles Historic District, some of the, not historic designation, but expanding the effort. And we've done a number of infill homes and worked to revitalize that area as well. So, we're trying to expand and increase the halo of the historic districts. The blue box represents a commercial block, which has had a vacant store, big box store, for many years now. And we're under discussions to try and get that block redeveloped. The blue lines, obviously, are the 23rd and 24th Street, but represent some of the entry corridors from the bench down into the downtown. And there's lots of traffic and a lot of influence that we can have on the neighborhood by revitalizing those entry corridors. And the green box is the new D school, the new school that will be replacing the former D school, which is the purple box. So, you can see that there's a lot of activity and a lot of investment that's going into this neighborhood. And a new housing subdivision next to the commercial and in the halo of these other improvements is kind of a game changer for that neighborhood. It's anticipated to be 23 new homes with a historic style of home that's, again, going to contribute to the impression and the perception of a high level of investment and a desirable place to live. As you know, the homes that we built on the Quincy and the Fowler Streets were very well done and were mostly presold. People loved the architecture. They fit in very well with the neighborhood. And so, that's the type of project that we're anticipating here. Okay. So, that's a bit on the neighborhood context. This is just a close-up slide of the development parcel. It shows mostly vacant ground. And then, down on the lower left, you'll see a commercial building with a parking lot. That commercial building is mostly vacant. It's all but vacant. There are two small office uses in there at this point. It's currently owned by the Housing Authority. And this slide will show ownership. Again, the green is the Ogden Housing Authority parcel. The pink are owned by Ogden City, which we've acquired over the past few years trying to get ready for this project. And the yellow on the top represents one additional parcel that would need to be acquired. And we have option agreements underway with the owner of the property on 23rd Street and are working on the option agreement with the Housing Authority as well. We had anticipated being a partner with the Housing Authority in this project, but because of, they had purchased this with their funds that were received from their HUD source. And now HUD is telling them that they need to liquidate this property and move on. And so, it's, they're no longer able to be a development partner and are placing the property for sale. So, it's our proposal that we purchase the property from the Housing Authority as well as the property that's noted in yellow. And that, again, would facilitate the development site. And this is an outline of the layout of the subdivision as it's proposed. Again, the 23 homes, it requires, of course, a street to be built through there to get access for the lots. And this is laid out in accordance with the zoning ordinance and in terms of lot area and side yards and width, width and the street width and all that. So, that kind of gives us an impression of the project. The project that's before you or the approval that's before you right now is to invest in the acquisition and the development of this land, in the street improvements, and to build, and to get this land developed in such a way that it is available for developers to come and purchase these lots and build vertically. So, we're not anticipating, under this approval, that we do the vertical construction, but that we make this land available for construction. However, because we're using federal funds, there are some strings attached that don't go away. And so, the subsequent developers that come to us will be required to enter into agreements that would meet the block grant requirements. The homes need to be affordable to households earning at or below 80% of median, which is the block grant requirement. One way of doing that, we've had some discussions with the Housing Authority. They can help us facilitate a jumpstart to this project by building six homes that they work with the homebuyers to, work with them over a period of time where they become the homeowner. It's what's known as the Crown Program. And it actually brings equity to the project so that the homes that are affordable to people that have moderate incomes, they can also be very nice homes. So, they sort of subsidize the cost of those homes for the lower-income people or the moderate-income people in such a way that these homes become very nice homes and we don't have to diminish the size and cost of these homes. So, that's a good fit and gets a jumpstart into the project as well. So, what we're recommending the council to approve is a resolution which does five things. It authorizes the use of $800,174 in block grant funds for the project. And that's anticipated to be used for land acquisition, development, and associated costs. The second item is that we would purchase the Housing Authority property, including the vacant land, which is approximately three, just a little over three acres, as well as the commercial building with its 1.8 acres associated with that. The amount, the appraised value on that is $725,000. The third item is that we would purchase the home at 947 23rd Street. And again, this is a voluntary acquisition for the price of $110,000. And number four, that we would go ahead and do the development, the land development, to create the road, the lots, get everything, all the utilities in place, and get this ready for vertical construction. And that, at a future date, development agreements would be entered into with developers. So, entertain questions.
Ward, why don't you show the pictures of what's proposed?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have done that before. These are examples of some of the homes that we have built on Quincy Avenue. They're roughly 1600 to 1700 square feet, three- and four-bedroom homes. The one on top is a four-bedroom home, and the other two are three-bedrooms. Arts and crafts style with some smart siding. Again, in the east-central planning area, we're, east-central zones, we're not allowed to use anything but these natural materials. So, vinyl siding, for instance, is not allowed. So, they end up having a higher quality, a nicer look. They cost a little more. But they're very nice. They have detached garages and some stone accents and very, very nice touches. And they're very desirable and very fitting for the neighborhood. So, this is the type of home that we're anticipating there.
What would the estimated price be of the...?
We're hoping that these homes could be sold for somewhere in the range of $170,000 and maybe, maybe a little more, depending on what the buyers want.
Mr. Ogden, what's been a great success is the homes that we have built. Most of them are pre-sold before they even finish.
Yes.
And it is improving the neighborhood and...
It's had a dramatic effect on the neighborhoods where we've taken out some bad properties or dealt with vacant lots and that kind of thing. So, we're anticipating a very strong effect. It's a highly visible street, 24th Street, as you go down just east of the old IGA store. It's very visible, so it'll be very nice. Some of those homes will be facing 24th Street, so.
And the other thing is the majority of this property is vacant.
Right. That's right.
Revitalize them.
Yes.
I like the impact that the 23 units will make in that neighborhood, convert that barren ground to productive homes and families in that area.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. We will now, we will now receive...
Wait, wait. We have to vote on this.
Input, right?
Right.
Receive input regarding proposed Resolution 2013-8 for the 2300 Fowler Avenue Infill Project.
Hi, my name is Roxanne Maraki. I live at 2429 Jackson Avenue. I know the area very well. I cannot believe that someone would go into that area and spend $170,000 for a house. When that whole block, if you drive up around that area, the homes are not taken care of. The majority of them are rentals. And I just don't see where it would, you know, be any positive impact to our neighborhood because our property value has reduced to about $30,000 in the last three years. So, it sounds good on paper, but in reality, I think you'd need to clean up the whole neighborhood in order for it to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name's Courtney White, 702 Polk Avenue, Ward 2. I just want to say two things. One, I don't think this is an appropriate use of public funds. I think that the fact that Ogden owns so little of that property and that it's mostly owned by the OHA, if they're gonna liquidate it, let them liquidate it. It sounds like this would be a great investment for some private, private real estate company to come in and buy it, put in these houses. I don't see any reason that Ogden should get involved in it. If they want to put the road in there, if they want to help them with the utilities, I mean, that's one thing. But really, I mean, why should Ogden City build the houses? Why not, you know, some private company? Especially when they have to build the houses for, you know, they have to build them at a higher quality and they'll probably what the other houses in the area. You know, it doesn't make sense to build this really, really nice house there where, I mean, you could use aluminum siding. What's wrong with aluminum siding? I mean, you could sell, you can make these houses for so much less and sell them and not have this overhead. And, you know, I just don't see why Ogden City should get involved with this. So, all right, thank you.
You?
If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt proposed Resolution 2013-8.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 2013-8 from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Vice Chair Garner?
Aye.
Chair Blair?
Aye. That passes.
And with this, I'd like to say we do use developers to build these properties. Ogden City's not building the homes. And we are having great success with homes that are in areas that are under distress. And they are selling, and people are buying these homes. So...
I think we're hoping to increase property values and have everybody in the neighborhood realize that they need to step up to a better standard, maybe, or a higher standard.
Past history has told us that these things are pretty good. Have a good effect on the neighborhoods, the city, and it doesn't hurt the city to do this.
And before we go to public comments, I'd just like to reiterate our civility statement. Individuals shall be dignified, respectful, and courteous during city council meetings. The city council values all opinions and points of view as long as they are represented in a civil manner. The council will not tolerate personal attacks, rudeness, disrespectful comments, insults, name-calling, or belittling comments. We desire to maintain an environment where everyone feels safe in expressing their opinions. Clapping, shouting, or booing during the meeting is not permitted.
With that, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please direct your comments to the city council and state your name and address for the record. And limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors.
Patrick Powers, Salt Lake City, representing the Utah Liberty Institute. First thing I'd like to say is that it has not been lost on those in attendance that public comment or public input is closed before the council cares to respond. There are times when the public, after hearing comment from an administration or the council, would actually like to give further comment. And so, that's just one teeny issue there. To move on, a couple of weeks ago, we came back here after having been the week before. The Utah Liberty Institute did provide every member of the council as well as the mayor with a packet. Were those received?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hoping that in the last three weeks, you've had a chance to at least browse through those. In there, we kind of outline a little more successfully than we're able to do in these meetings some of our concerns and then some of the information that informs those concerns. In the last few weeks, some of those concerns... In the last few weeks, some of those concerns have actually gotten worse in light of some of the comments that have been made by the administration, especially the police department, and those representing the police department. Just recently, it was released in the paper here in Ogden that the police have actually admitted that they are routinely kicking down people's doors. And that the fact that they feel that most of those are relatively successful, that kicking down doors and pointing guns at people is somehow benign, that that somehow doesn't have an effect on the residents of Ogden. I think that's an incredibly dangerous premise to hold, that somehow because the police are successfully kicking in doors, pointing guns at people, and arresting them or searching the premises, that somehow the practice itself is benign, that it has no negative consequences. You'll hear from a number of other people that have come here to speak tonight, who have various expertises and backgrounds and experiences here in Ogden, who will give you a little bit more information, some of the same information that we all share about that. But what I'd like to do is pose these specific questions. Have you had a chance to read the packet? What do you feel about the proposed reforms? And what are any of your concerns about those? I would love to have this discussion here tonight for the public to see. Timed up? Okay, perfect. As long as you've got those questions, I would love to hear, and those in attendance would also love to hear, your responses on those. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ernest Stewart. I reside at 1670 25th Street in Ogden. I have been an Ogden resident for all of my adult life, before that, growing up in South Ogden. I am standing in front of you today to try and impress upon you the importance of what we are trying to convey, and that is the dangers of home invasion-style raids. Let us touch on a few reasons why police and county officials feel that they are so critical. Since most of the home invasion-style raids that incur in our city are drug-related, Weber Morgan Narcotics Strike Force state that these types of raids are necessary so that a suspect does not have a chance to dispose of any evidence. Mayor, councilmen and women, when did a bag of drugs become more important than that in the safety of our citizens' lives? Or for that matter, their liberties and rights? I would much rather a bag of drugs go down the toilet than to suffer a loss of an officer, a loved one, a child, or a beloved family pet. A quote drawn from Overkill, a publication by Bradley Balco, best known for his work at the Cato Institute, reads, quote, "These raids bring unnecessary violence and provocation to nonviolent drug offenders, many of whom would be guilty of only misdemeanors. And they terrorize innocents when police mistakenly target the wrong residents that we've seen. These raids have consistently shown an increase in needless deaths and injuries, not only of drug offenders, but also of police officers, children, bystanders, and innocent suspects." I'd also like to add family pets to that. Our officers should be able to enforce the law, but do so respectfully. Give the wrong kind of person the wrong, too much power, and it can be dangerous. That is why our police officers need to be the very best of us. If faced with a situation where a firearm needs to be discharged, they should be very heavy in heart. Anything that would indicate otherwise is not the kind of personality that we need protecting us. That is not the kind of service that we need. One last reason that I would like to highlight today before I go is that officials feel that home invasion-style raids are essential because of the amount of military training that our home, that our U.S. veterans are bringing home with them when they come back. Weber County Sheriff's Deputy Clint Anderson was quoted in Sunday's paper saying, "They are better armed and better trained. With this increasing amount of soldiers coming home, this alone should be enough to give anybody pause." So please stop these raids. Don't be too impartial or too cowardice to come up and agree that, yes, something can be changed, something can be done. So please look at me, look at all of us. We are very determined people. We will not be forgotten, we will not be intimidated, and we will not stop. And a simple, non-committal promise to research or conduct deeper investigations before a raid is performed will not quiet me. So take that in consideration as you, you know, think deeply on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Scott Simons. My address is 6125 Elk Ridge, Peola, Utah. I'm the father of Kelly Simons, who was killed by U.S. Marshals on January 9. She was ambushed by the U.S. Marshals by head-on collision, and another marshal came up behind her and shot her in the back of the head. Now, I was unaware of the criminal code until I've had time to reflect on it and look at the justifications that the district attorney of Salt Lake County used. And I had a good talk with Sim Gill, and he's a very good man, but he's bound by this criminal code. In the criminal code, if you would take the time to read it yourself and analyze it yourself, you will find that that criminal code gives the police the opportunity and the justifications to be the judge, the jury, and the executioner. You can read it yourself, you can find out that this code is reflected in many of the other cities and other counties in this state. I think that it has to start at the local council to review these, these codes and see if indeed that they're too broad and ambiguous. Now, these codes were derived by law enforcement themselves, by their lobbies. And what it does allow is that if an officer even feels that they're in danger, they're justified to shoot, to kill. And it's not the training that our officers are receiving now, because, well, I should say it actually is a training, but it's not more training that's going to change any things, because they're being trained, in my opinion, and many others, in the wrong manner. And their, their training is to shoot center mass, two to the center mass, one to the head at any provocation. Their safety is first, it is not the citizen's safety that they were sworn to uphold and protect. Now, I, you know, I can't argue any points here, but I can just encourage you to please, please, look at these codes and see if you think they're just. Now, Sim Gill's hands is tied because the criminal code says how he has to decide if it's justified or not. But if you guys can narrow the broad ambiguity of these codes, that a police officer can actually be accountable for their actions, that I think we can change some of these police violence that the whole country is suffering right now. And I appreciate the ear of all of you here to hear this. I'm just trying to be reasonable and logical, and I'd just like to thank you for hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again once more. Courtney White, 702 Polk Avenue, Ward 2. I just wanted to say that I think a lot of the, the city council may feel like this isn't an issue that's, that's their responsibility. This is something that's the administration, the police officers. I just wanted to remind you that there is Title 11 within the city code that does deal with Utah, or deal with police regulations. And about the criminal code, I wanted to say that we do adhere to the, to the, to the criminal code. And the funny part is, we do have some exceptions. So, I mean, and this isn't the case, and maybe we could do something like that. But the funny, you know, we, we could do an exception. I mean, we've done an exception for pyramid schemes, and something as crazy as bestiality, we've done an exception here in Ogden. Why can't we do an exception that just says that no agency can do a no-knock or knock and announce raid during non-daylight hours? I don't think that's something that, you know, maybe you can make it, you know, in case where eminent, you know, public safety is at hand, you know, something like that. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, when you're talking about a person who's got, you know, a couple of plants of marijuana, maybe they've got a, you know, whatever they have, you know, is that something that we need to knock down their door and start, you know, possibly a firefight, you know, with the middle of, in the middle of the night where, where things can happen? I just, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, before we, you know, say that this isn't a city council issue, we do have, we do have these sort of things in our city code. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John. I live in South Ogden. I want to thank you tonight for letting me do the pledge of allegiance. And I would also like to invite any member, mayor, and all to come out to our folks and see what we do. Come out anytime. We're there usually, I'm there from 1:00 to 4:00 on Wednesdays. And we have a lot of stuff going on in the community that we're trying to, to do. Giving parades and stuff like this, so we get known. I would like us to all someday work together as a unit for our returning vets. That's part of our job. So if there's anything I can do on that, or if I could ask anybody for help at any time, I'll do it.
John, while you're there, just tell them the address of the legion.
It's 845 West 24th Street. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
My name is Robin Halverson, and I live at 714 33rd Street. I didn't see this, I'll sign it earlier. About 10 years ago, I, my daughter got a divorce, and I had a vengeful ex-sun-in-law. One day, I get a very nice, on a Sunday afternoon, I get a little knock at the door, and it's the, the drug people. Seems that somebody has told them that I'm growing marijuana in an aquarium. Now, they had done a little bit of research, they came during the daylight hours, and they talked to me. They did not insist on searching my house. They could tell after they met me that something wasn't quite clicking. But as the previous guy said, if it was nighttime, maybe if he told the story a little bit different, the story would have been different at my house. Especially today, I'm scared to death to even get pulled over. All cops treat, all police officers in my experience since 9/11, treat all of us like terrorists. Well, one day, I'm just sitting here minding my own business, looking out the window, and I see cops stripping down and putting on riot gear. Well, it seems that they had somebody they wanted arrested. They had people lined up all over with rifles pointing away. They didn't tell anybody what was going on. And I just think the whole, I want to call it a material, I don't know what kind of a trend it is, but we're not all terrorists. It used to be that Ogden's finest was Ogden's finest for all of us, but it's not anymore. It depends on which side you're on, which side of the door, and depends on what story they've been told. They don't try to contact anybody else to find out if a story's right. Fortunately, that day that they knocked by, came by my house, my son came home and confirmed the fact that it was a story he was telling that somebody overheard. It was just a story about somebody in Wyoming. And so you can't even tell stories because it might get back to the drug people, and they might come do a no-knock warrant. And some people, there's already been quite a bit of damage, but my neighbors, the night of the day, we had the SWAT team out there, we actually went out on his porch and watched. So there isn't now any concern for the neighbors. There's no concern about who else. The only thing they were concerned about was getting their man. And they did get their man, but it was a pretty tense afternoon, and I don't want him coming to my house like that. I paid taxes here for a long time, and I'd like to be reasonably considered innocent until proven guilty in a court of law.
Thank you.
Kevin Irons, 2625 Tyler Avenue. It's, I've been arrested twice for charges that I didn't commit. And on both the police statements, they put on my record, or put on the statement, the police statement, that I was violent with police and violent with others. Didn't happen. I wasn't violent with anybody. Violence is defined by the World Health Organization as an intentional use of physical force or power threatened or actual against a person or against a group or community that either results in a, or has a high likelihood of resulting in death or injury. I am afraid at night to go to sleep, I think about, you know, what if they come? My wife is afraid. She wouldn't call the police if something happened. She would be afraid to call the police. Same with my son. And he's 14 years old. You know, I'm arrested, and then I'm, you know, I'm charged, and then I'm prosecuted. And the prosecutor is so hell-bent on prosecuting me for a charge I didn't commit, that he commits a crime, charged me with a crime that I didn't commit. Now, I feel sorry for that man, because he's actually a pretty good guy. But what he did to me was a crime.
Thank you, Mr. Irons.
Mayor, council members, Chief Johnson, Director Cook, and Attorney Williams, my name is Michael Stewart. I have lived in Ogden since 1956. There's been a lot of things that have been said here that I was prepared to bring up. The last time that I appeared before the council, I had asked everybody to consider seeing a documentary film called The House I Live In. Could I see by a show of hands, anybody that saw that documentary? You know, I'm not here to debate the issue, the drug issue, other than the fact that it's a major issue that creates problems in the community and the interaction of the police with the citizens. There's an organization called LEAP that is made up of former law enforcement, police officers, judges, prosecutors, and they've spent their careers fighting this same problem. One of the comments that they made about this book that I believe all of you have been given, is, I'd like to quote, "The concern over escalating police paramilitary raids is a valid one, as this tactic takes us farther and farther away from the concept of civil policing. The only question is how much more damage must our society and our cherished civil liberties sustain before our political leaders end the destruction?" I received a Ogden City Community Bulletin that says, "Community police partner with citizens. Strengthening relationships between Ogden police and the community is the goal of the city's community policing program." I believe that the, all the problems that we have, they can be solved without the use of violence, and especially against nonviolent people. You know, there was some talk about this thing in the newspaper about the military, the people, our criminals are more militarily trained and more dangerous. What I'd like to know is who they're talking about? You know, are they talking about our returning servicemen that are coming back from these wars? They're the criminals? They have automatic weapons? I think that there needs to be some research done, because I've done research with the state of Utah Bureau of Criminal and Identification, and there, there has been no automatic weapons that have been used in any violent crimes in the last 10 years. You know, why do our police have to be militarized?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
My name is Nick Moyes, 2364 Cahill Drive, Saratoga Springs. I'm approaching you from a different angle this evening, council, as a certified NRA pistol instructor, and a Utah concealed firearm permit instructor, and the co-founder, CEO of utahgunexchange.com. I want to address the, I want to make sure that you're aware of a current statute that exists in Utah Code Law that I explain to each one of my students when they come take my courses. It reads, "A person is justified in using force against another when and to the extent that he reasonably believes that force is necessary to prevent or terminate the other's unlawful entry into or attack upon his habitation. However, he is justified in the use of force which is intended or likely to cause death or serious bodily injury only if the entry is made or attempted in a violent or tumultuous manner surreptitiously or by stealth, and he reasonably believes that the entry is attempted or made for the purpose of assaulting or offering personal violence to any person dwelling or being in the habitation." and he reasonably believes that force is necessary to prevent the assault or offer of personal violence." It keeps going. And he reasonably believes that entry is made or attempted for the purpose of committing a felony in the habitation and that the force is necessary to prevent the commission of the forcible felony. I tell you this because I have nothing to hide. I am a law-abiding citizen, I couldn't be an instructor and maintain my certification if I wasn't. But I go to sleep every night with a Glock 19 under my pillow, my wife has a pink AR-15 semi-automatic rifle next to her bed, loaded, and then there's another Sig 238 in the nightstand. If a no-knock warrant was ever committed at my home, I don't know if it's too soon or not, but you had a recent incident where Officer Frankham was shot and killed and five others were injured. If that'd been at my home, there would have been more officers dead. It would have been a disaster. If, I mean, I constantly talk to my students and tell them, your door gets kicked down in the middle of the night, get ready. And if someone goofed and the tomato plants that I plan on growing in my basement, and like, it's a true story, I'm planning on doing it, but it terrifies me, because if someone says, "Hey, I saw some foliage in Nick's basement and he's got UV light set up and he's got them on timers," I bet it's weed. And my house gets invaded in the middle of the night, that scares the living daylights out of me. It scares me because I know I'll end up dead and so will other police officers. And I'm not a fan of that. So I'd recommend to the council, end these daylight, low-light, no-knock warrants, get videotapes and cameras on these helmets of these officers. Something's got to change.
Hello again, my name is Roxanne Maraki. This is not on the subject of a no-knock, but it is on the subject of how police officers approach your home. Recently, the police were called to my home because my dog had got loose. The officer was at my home, my dog had been out of the house for five seconds when the police officer shot and killed my German Shepherd. I just think that when they approach a home, that they should find out what exactly is going on, if the person that lives in that house, if they have ever been in trouble with the law before, which we have never, we have lived in our home for 28 years, never had the police called on us. I just would like to know why there was, my house was basically surrounded by police officers with guns drawn because my dog was loose. And my dog got shot, killed. I cry myself to sleep every night because he was my best friend. And I think that the Ogden City Police just needs to look at how they approach a person's home before they surround this house with their weapons drawn. And then five days later, they shot another German Shepherd. The lady had multiple sclerosis, I have met her, she can barely walk. She called the officers for there was someone in her home. Do you know that the police officers never went inside the home? The only thing that they were concerned about was how many pain pills she was on. They shot her dog from 10 feet away, they shot my dog from eight feet away. There's something wrong here. When they can just go around shooting animals or shooting whoever they want, entering a home however they want, I don't feel safe with Ogden City Police anymore and I have lived here my whole entire life. And it needs to be looked into. The police officer in my case was exonerated, which you tell me, eight feet away, come on. That's all I have to say, thank you.
My name is Brian Parsons, I'm visiting from Salt Lake on behalf of families like the Hill family over here. You've heard a lot of emotional pleas from people. So I know the scope of what's within your control as far as police policy and these sort of things is limited. As far as these emotional pleas, what I would ask all of you is what are you going to say to a father like this man over here from a citizen of Ogden when they come to you when their daughter or son has been killed and you were all presented with an opportunity to think or act upon this? And, you know, if these emotional pleas don't force you to act, I know that what is within your responsibility is the fiduciary, the money, things that are tied to the city. And, you know, if you look at cases like in Atlanta, Georgia, the Catherine Johnson case where a 92-year-old woman was shot and killed about 1:00 AM by one of these no-knock warrants, the city of Atlanta just settled with the family for $4.5 million. And, you know, that's one of these Ogden United budgets for an entire year. And I think the city of Atlanta has a lot more money, they can take more hits and accidentally kill more people and still be able to afford to do that than the city of Ogden can. So I would encourage you and I would ask you to look at what policies you have and what actions you can take, rather than saying, deferring this to a police chief, or just look at what is within your scope and then act on that. So, thank you very much.
Evening, my name is Kenny Barlow, address 556 North 1110 West in Orem, Utah. I drove all the way up here tonight. I don't have much more to offer than what's already been said and I agree with all of it wholeheartedly. I want to just offer a couple of more anecdotal things. Recently, a US Senator from Kentucky, as well as a very famous comedic magician, both went on the record and basically said that if the last three of our US presidents were convicted under drug laws that we convict people with now, there is no way that they would be the leaders of the free world. The only thing I have to ask is what happened, what would have happened to those three men if they had been residents of Ogden? That's a question I'd like to pose to you. On top of that, once upon a time in my life, I worked for a police department. And a close, personal friend of mine who is a police officer is on a officer-involved shooting team, the team that's involved or responded to investigate officer-involved shootings. The thing that he told me is that the advice that he gives to his team is that their one goal is to make that officer involved in the shooting look like, quote, "a rock star." Again, all I have to do is, all I have to offer you is these anecdotal pieces, but I want you to think about that. This is the, these are the personalities and the mentalities that we are giving our officers when they go out and investigate officer-involved shootings. They're not interested in finding the truth, they're interested in protecting their own. I encourage you to think about that.
Hi, I'm Michael Yucastad, I'm a resident of Salt Lake City. I want to start by reading a part of our constitution which guarantees the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures, shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the person or things to be seized. This has been federally protected by the exclusionary clause which has basically allowed or not allowed evidence gathered through lawless means to be used in court. In 2006, however, in the case of Hudson v. Michigan, the federal disincentive was basically taken away. So now, the onus is on local governments to make sure that police excesses are not, well, that there are no police excesses. And with that responsibility on the city council, on the police chief, on the mayor, I just feel that it deserves a little bit more than the, hmm, no disrespect, pusillanimous response that it's gotten at this point.
Hi, my name is Scott, I live in Layton City. I just want to give you my two cents. Why don't you guys try and do something about all the problems with the police and then maybe the police commissioner and everybody will see that you guys are trying and that might influence them to make efforts on their part before someone uses social media and gets a thousand residents of Ogden and go buy fully automatic weapons? Then you'll have a thousand angry residents from Ogden with fully automatic weapons, because any law-abiding citizen can buy an automatic weapon. And they don't have any training like police or anything, so that's just my opinion.
We appreciate those.
My name is Jacob Jones, I'm from Salt Lake City. I don't come to a lot of city council meetings mainly because this is emotional to me. It really irates me to see such little disregard by municipalities for basic, common sense civil liberties that seem to be completely forgotten. And I don't understand, I don't understand how we even have to petition cities to protect us from our own police. This is madness to me, but they're basic human rights. And I know some love to sit here and micromanage people's lives, but you guys are playing with people's lives when you empower others to go knock down doors. And these are the things that our country was founded against. It doesn't even make sense to me how we have such little disregard for our constitution. I don't get it, I don't get where you guys come from. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
My name is Sean Curtis, I'm from 225 Dakota Avenue, Provo, Utah. I have a slightly different concern than most of the people that have come spoken with y'all. Recently, the chief of police of Ogden had a comment to some, to the effect that his main concern is making sure that officers get home safe after, in whatever situation they're in, that they get out alive of whatever, whatever happens. Whether that means as a matter of simple, common procedures to shoot all dogs in the vicinity before they handle any business, or going at night and using dynamic entry tactics for nonviolent suspects. But I think the most effective method that you all could influence to avoid the death of officers, because that's, I mean, we are just as concerned for the lives and well-being of officers because they're also human beings, coincidentally. But the most effective thing you can do to help save their lives is to use policies encouraging not sending officers into the line of fire into dynamic entry situations unnecessarily, because it has already claimed the lives of officers in situations that were not necessary to take place. And so I would encourage you, for the interest of the lives of the officers and the lives of their families, to take that, take that into consideration before you go to war against the citizens of your city. Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Chris, Chris Austin, I'm down from Logan, Utah, tonight. First of all, I have to say, as an Army reservist from the Cold War and also the father of a combat veteran Marine who served in Afghanistan, I really was offended to hear your attorney, Dee Smith, you know, make a comment about veterans and being more dangerous and pretty much calling us criminals. And I don't appreciate that at all. But everyone here has actually talked about a lot of the problems with the way, how, the way the police are executing their search warrants and their arrest warrants. And what I want to suggest to you, I know all of you as city council might be saying, what can we do about it? There is something kind of fundamental you can, and that is follow the money. I just heard tonight during a quick report about your budget, you know, there was a slight, a small discussion about grants that you're receiving for law enforcement. So take a look at where that grant money is coming from. Now, is it coming from Homeland Security? Is it money to help contribute toward buying more, more equipment and more vehicles, pretty much more means to do these types of raids into homes where people are getting killed? And so that's what I would suggest to you now as a solution. Take a look at the money, look at the grants, and if you have a choice between that style of law enforcement and community-based policing, I suggest choosing community-based policing. Thank you.
Counsel, Mayor, Sonia Stewart, 1607 Lake Street, Ogden. Our topic tonight is Ogden Can Do Even Better. Wouldn't we like to be the star city to change, from military tactics to people skills? As a university town, I think we have enough education to realize that violence is not the answer. Yes, each case will be different and take time to assess, but how much is a human life worth? Certainly, shift change or time constraints are not the number one focus. An investigation before a search should at least include information such as, is the person a native in Ogden? Do they own their own home? Military background? What hours do they work? Do they live alone? Are they hyper vigilant? And is the address correct? That always helps. Let's try harder. You know that there is a new movement of burglary that is pounding on the door, demanding the entrance because they're, saying they're cops. So you have a choice. You can answer your door and be burglarized, or are you not going to answer your door and get shot? It's really getting scary out there, I can't imagine that you guys have not noticed. Please, do something. I know it's within your power and as a citizen, we have to be vigilant.
Hi, my name's Eric Hill, I'm at 1033 here. I just want to say briefly what Sonia had said about how cops, you know, or burglaries constantly coming in at night, saying that they are the police. You know, how are you supposed to know who's on their side of the door, just like the police? These nighttime raids are just horrible, they need to change, they need more information. You know, a lot of people are getting hurt, a lot of things are just going the wrong way. We need to think more about it. I also agree that, you know, for the officer's safety as well, you know, they need to come home to their families, as well as I need to protect mine at night. So if you could take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Parsons. Thank you for all of your attendance tonight and listening to these pleas. I just want to say that in 2009, there is a mayor in Burnwick Heights, Maryland, who had a package of marijuana mailed to his house unbeknownst to him, and his stores were busted down. He and his mother were held at gunpoint and his two dogs were shot. With these tactics, no one is immune, and that's the scary thing. We have great respect for our police officers and we want them to have the best reputation and be considered Ogden's finest. I think that these tactics are just building up walls between the people of Ogden citizens and between police officers. And so I think that just as another case to try to end these tactics, if anything, it would just help improve the relationship between citizens and police officers. We shouldn't be having to come up and say not to be afraid of police officers. We should not be afraid of our officers. They're here to serve and protect us. And I think if we address this issue, maybe it would open up the doors for more positive things and more positive communication to occur between citizens and police officers. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. We appreciate those of you that came and shared your concerns and information and those of you asking for us to respond, we will do that at a time in the future. Any comments from administration?
Two quick comments. It's important that we recognize that there is a lot of loss and pain in this room and we certainly appreciate that and that's why we take this very seriously. A lot of what you have said, we do have in place and we examine every nighttime raid and look at what's happening there and try to find ways to improve. I can certainly tell you that nobody's looking to make rock stars of those interviewing these people. On my first day on the job, I got to suffer through the loss of Officer Jared Frankham. And you talk about wanting to look at people that have suffered a loss. I looked into her widow-less eyes and the fact that she does not have a father for her children, and it is a very emotional, dynamic thing. One of the key threads, common threads you all have in here is that you come as law-abiding citizens. And the reality of it is, there are people out there with very bad intentions that we need to protect our people against. It's not an easy answer for anybody. We do take this very seriously, but after this event happened, I spent the entire first year trying to do a ride-along with our officers at least once a month so I get to see what they see and I'm not making decisions in a vacuum. And I can tell you, a lot of comments were made about these guys being the best of us and I believe that for the most part, all of those officers are the best among us. And I'd be not doing my job and being dishonest if I didn't stand up for them and say, "I really appreciate a lot of what they do and this is something that we take seriously on behalf of the citizens and very seriously on behalf of the police force." And we do want everybody to get home safe at night. But the reality of it is, is that there are people with very bad intentions. That's why we examine every raid that we do. A lot of what you talked about in terms of doing the homework before we get there has been implemented. We talked about some changes in policy, internal policy. That happened immediately after some of these events came to light and we were able to make improvements. We'll continue to do that, but I do believe, for the most part, that every one of those guys that are on our Ogden City Police Department are among the best of us. There are a lot of examples made for events that happen across the nation and we can't deny that those are terrible events. We're going to do everything we can here locally to not repeat those mistakes. We do everything we can to learn from those mistakes, but I do believe and recognize and appreciate everything that our boys in blue do to help protect us and let me go to bed safe at night. And I hope that we can continue the dialogue. I appreciate you guys all being here. We don't expect it to die. Expect this to be something that's done continually. There's never going to be an end to these conversations and discussions. It's very important dialogue to have. So thank you all for being here and know that we do take this very seriously and address it.
Counsel staff?
Nothing, thank you.
Any other council members?
Just a couple of things. First, you know, with the stuff that occurred before, public comments, truly thank you to administration and their council and our council staff for working through the budget issues and our CIP projects. I know that was a lot of work. And strong kudos to the mayor for helping us with the ramp application and the grants. These things will make a difference for the citizens in our community. And I am grateful for the information that was presented tonight. We do take this, as the mayor said, very seriously. We care about the citizens of this city. That's why we're here. I see heads shaking and stuff, but, you know, it's hard being on this side too. And we do take this seriously, so thank you.
Chair, I also would like to echo some of those comments that have been raised tonight. We've listened to a lot of commentary and my empathy level is right high. I try to feel what people are feeling when they're talking. I also have a similar experience to the mayor. Every time I see one of our Ogden City Police Officers, I try to go over and get to know them. And they are not evil men. They're good men. I would not choose their job. I don't think many of us would. We owe them the respect that they deserve. Nobody's perfect, but we strive to be. We strive to get better. And I think that's — I appreciate the comments so that we can understand what you feel so that we can work towards being more perfect than we currently are. I really love public input. I think that's what makes a city go. And so I appreciate those who have come to try to make our community better. That's why I ran for office, is to make our community better. But we are on a process. Don't think that nothing's going on. We're on a process to be better and I think we've got the full support of the mayor and to do that. So thank you for coming.
I think the nice thing about our great country is that we have an opportunity to express our feelings and that's the real beauty of public comment. And that's the right that each and every one of us have in this country is to voice our concerns and voice our feelings. And we appreciate, or I do appreciate, the comments that you've made and that's why we live in this country, is because we have the freedom to express our feelings. And I thank you for it.
Every one of us sitting up here are parents, number one. And we guard and love our children and it broke our hearts for everybody involved that is in these incidents that have happened, whether it's a dog, a family dog, or whether it's a policeman or a citizen. And do not assume that we don't care because I can tell you, there's been a lot of angst from our point of view. There's been a lot of discussion. It hasn't been — it has not gone unnoticed by all of us. It's just that in — really, in this form of government, it makes it very difficult for us to be able to explain to you because, as we've said before, it's not our purview to do this. It all seems to fall on our new mayor and that's not fair either because we've all experienced the tragedy, no matter whether — no matter what, we've all experienced this tragedy. And we're all very concerned and certainly don't want to ever see it happen again in And thank you for taking the time to come because I know all of you have been working toward this. And this was an opportune night for all of us to sit down together and hear what your feelings are, but your feelings are the same feelings that we're feeling sitting up here. So thank you very, very much.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
One second.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Garner to adjourn and a second from Councilmember Hare. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, there will be a city council work session following this. There'll be a council meeting discussion and council business.